Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
We'll call the meeting of the Liberty County Board of Commissioners to order. Mr. Brown, has the meeting been properly advertised?
Yes, sir, it has.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, and good to see everybody. Let me go ahead and say Merry Christmas to you now. In fact, Commissioners, I'll let y'all, I'll give everybody a spot to say Merry Christmas to the audience, because I know we have our live audience as well, and we have our audience on Facebook. So Commissioner Stevens, we'll start with you and work our way down.
I'll be last.
You'll be last. What do you say?
I'll go ahead, Ms. Chairman. I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And I look forward to the new year coming, but by all means, we need to continue to use our safety precautions and stay safe out in the community. And I wish everyone that you'll be able to meet with your families this coming Christmas season and just have a good family time together.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
Yes, sir. Good evening. I would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and let's stay safe and vigilant going into the new year as we share our holidays with our family and loved ones. Everyone still be safe and vigilant. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Gill.
Thanks, Ms. Chairman. I was just looking at my calendar here. We're not gonna meet on the 16th?
Yeah, but I won't.
Oh, just want to do the Christmas thing now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, I was just wondering. Yeah. I know.
Keep it on your calendar.
But no, if we off, just let me know. I won't show up. No, Merry Christmas, everyone. You know, I hope you enjoy the holidays. If you're traveling, please exercise caution. And, you know, if you've got family coming in, hopefully, they do the same on their way in. But, you know, we had another trying year. Hopefully, things will be better in 2022 as far as the pandemic and everything. But just continue to pray and ask for God's grace, and I know He'll grant it. So Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone. Thank you.
Commissioner Walden?
Yes, sir. Ms. Chairman, thank you. I just want to say Merry Christmas. I hope everybody has a Happy New Year along with that. But we have went through some trying times on the board, in the community, and as a nation. And Pastor Hayes is here to, I'm sure, wish us well, and please remember us, we're human, we make mistakes. And God will forgive us if we're erring on the side of caution, I'm sure. But I just want to say that it has been a very productive year along with that. We've, we always sit up here, and it appears to the public that it's an arguing match, but it's not. Everybody's got their own opinions about things. I've got mine just as much as anybody else. So I'd like to say that everybody, please be attentive at our meetings if you're in person, in Facebook. As former Chairman McIver has said, you know, the easiest thing to do is nothing. That's a, that's a given. We can sit back and nothing happened. But he assured me that forward-thinking is the best way to go. So again, thank you, and to my fellow Commissioners, I hope everybody has a good year.
Thank you, sir. Now, is Commissioner Frazier online already, or?
He is not.
He is not? Okay. All right. Commissioner Stevens?
I want to say wish everyone a happy holiday. Like I say, we've been through a, this year has been a test. And to all of the employees of Liberty County, all of the citizens of Liberty County, be safe, because you know that we have another virus, another set of virus that's floating around. So let's be safe so that we can see the end of '21 and hoping to see the end of 2022.
Thank you, sir. If Mr. Brown's able to reach Commissioner Frazier, we'll bring him in afterwards. Pastor Hayes, if you would come now, lead us in our prayer. And I'm told that you're gonna have your bride to lead us in the pledge. That's a good look. That's a good look.
All right.
If we were standing now for our invocation and our pledge.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Let us bow our heads for a word of prayer. Gracious heavenly Father, we are so thankful and grateful, so many blessings that you've bestowed upon this county, and you continue to do so many wonderful things in all of our lives. And even as we speak on the pandemic and the possibilities of things that may happen in the future, we thank you for the grace that has been shown to us, for the level of care and concern that has been shown to this community. We thank you for your goodness and for your mercy. We thank you for these men and women that are here to stand and to lead and to help to point us in the right direction. Give them wisdom, give them understanding, give them compassion, and show them grace. Continue to keep them in good health and keep their hearts and minds focused on the task at hand. We give you thanks for what's gonna take place on tonight and how you're gonna continue to lead and grow this community. We thank you for this and all things, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, for the matter of record, I think Ms. Hayes is OPAL, am I right? Yes, OPAL. Okay. All right. Thank you so much for sharing with us. Now, little Ricky will see you've been on County Commission Facebook Live. Commissioner Frazier's on?
He is, sir.
Yeah. Commissioner Frazier?
Yes, sir. How's it, everything?
Good, sir. How are you?
Good, sir. Doing good.
Good.
You know, just dealing with the circumstances, but I'm living at everything as well.
Good. We allowed each Commissioner to extend Christmas greetings. We don't want, didn't want to leave you out of that. So if you want to right now, sir, you're up.
Oh, great. Thank you so much. This is on behalf of myself, the family. I just want to extend Christmas greetings to all the constituents of Liberty County, District Two, and just want everyone to understand what the real reason of the season is. And just understand that, you know, life is short, and just spend as much time as possible with your friends and family, and while you're here, just try to make a difference.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you. Appreciate you from your Commissioners. And also, you know, it comes from our hearts, from each of us, to Mr. Brown, you and our staff, and Mr. Mosley. Thank you, guys, for what you've done, what you do every day, and we pray for you too. God's richest blessings for this holiday season, and certainly a prosperous 2022. Thank you.
Mr. Mosley, how long have you been with us now?
Twenty months, sir. Twenty months.
Twenty months. Time flies.
All right. Our agenda's printed before us. We will now have the minutes for our approval for the month of November.
Chair, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented.
I second it.
And a second motion, second for to approve the November minutes. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Hold the pose. All right. Let me go back over, Commissioner Walden didn't mention it, but for the matter of record, I think he deserves it. He served us so well. Good to have, I call him Chairman Emeritus John McIver in the audience today. Good to have you. Wave your hand, sir, those of you. Good to have you, sir, in the audience to be with us. Now serving as Chairman of our Board of Elections, so even though he's not in this capacity, he's still serving. I'm glad that he has that spirit, willing to serve his community. Thank you, sir, for being here. All right. Finance report, Ms. McGlaughlin.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Everyone should have their October report. I'll just highlight a few things. As of the end of October, we've achieved about 17% of our budgeted revenues. As you know, most of those are cyclical, and tax bills went out the week of Thanksgiving, I believe. They were scheduled to go out the week of Thanksgiving. So probably in December this month and January, we'll start to see a significant inflow of property tax revenue. Expenditures at the end of October were about 25% of our budgeted expenditures, so looking real good, staying under, under budget right now. At the end of October, there was approximately 3.8 months worth of operational expenditures in the undesignated and unreserved fund balance. This time, one year ago, you were at 4.4 months. So we're close, not doing exactly as good as we were last year, but our budget has significantly increased from last year, so those operational expenditures are up. Plus, the timing of when those revenues come in and the, and fund balance goes up also impacts that. Departmental, in the departments within the General Fund, there are a couple that are running slightly ahead of schedule. We've discussed those before. Your coastal Georgia regional dues that are, that are paid one time in the year, skew that budget for the rest of the year, as does the Superior Court law clerk expenses that we pay upfront at the beginning of the year. The only other department that's running slightly ahead of schedule is the other financial uses, and this is the operating transfer out to 911 that the General Fund does every month. That's running slightly ahead of schedule. Solid Waste, at the end of October, we've got a net loss of about $69,000. I do expect that to turn around when those solid waste assessments come in. That is a significant revenue line item for us. So I do expect that to turn around in the next couple of months. Your, all the departments within solid waste are all operating within their budget and under budget right now. And the only reason we have the net loss is because of the timing of those revenues. So we're staying within our budget spending, but those revenues just haven't come in yet. So we've got, that's why you have that net loss right now. All your special revenue funds, your victim witness, your 911, child support, records service, all operating within their budget. And your sales tax report for the month of October, collections are up, wonderful, $953,000 for the month of October that we received, wonderful, again, above budget. So year-to-date, four, sales tax, six. We're running about $3 million ahead of schedule.
Wow.
Which is great.
Excellent.
This includes, well, through October, you're right.
Through October.
Uh-huh.
T-Splopped, again, collections are running well, $876,000 in the month of October. So everything's going along well. I don't have anything else to report. We are trying to finish up the audit. I anticipate having draft financials, hopefully, by the end of this week, so that Mr. Brown and I can work on the last little part, so that we can get that audit issued by the end of the year. We also issued the first responder, first responder ARPA money that the state provided, and I anticipate next week going online and filing for reimbursement of that. As soon as I get all those affidavits back, I'm waiting on one department.
Ms. Chairman, I have a question concerning those funds. Are they listed under revenue here? And maybe not for October, but.
You're talking about what?
ARPA funds.
No, those are in a separate fund. They're not part of the General Fund. No. That, we had to set up a separate fund just to capture ARPA expenses.
Okay. So can you start giving us?
So when you finalize that budget?
When we finalize the budget?
I can put the budget into our system.
Okay.
Because right now, all you would see, you would probably see one, you'd probably see two line items. One for the premium pay, and it's just a lump sum total that's posted from payroll, and then one for the first responder pay. It's also posted from payroll. But it, but once you adopt the budget that we've put together for those ARPA funds, I can go ahead and create that budget in our software. And if you want, I can go ahead and include that, too.
So when are we gonna look at that budget, or is that like an ongoing work in progress? I thought we did.
It will be an ongoing budget through 2026, actually, but we can bring it back and show it in the mid-month for y'all to go ahead and just adopt the draft, if that's okay.
Because I thought that we could kind of change it as we go.
You can.
Change it as we go.
And you will.
So therefore, you should be able to drop those numbers in there and start giving us a report? Okay.
Right.
The only hanging piece was the nonprofits. Wasn't that the only outlier?
Well, I think we budgeted for it.
But we didn't put an amount.
Well, we didn't talk about the amounts specifically individually, and we didn't talk about that process yet.
Process.
And I think, once that's nailed down, and I know when we did show you the budget before, you went ahead and approved the payment of the premium pay, even though the whole budget wasn't adopted yet.
We did.
So we do need to bring that back before you. So you can formally adopt it, but it's like any budget. It'll change as circumstances change.
As we go. So is this something that the committee needs to come back together on to establish the amount that we're going to?
Actually, actually, we're putting some recommendations together for you, based on what we're seeing, and we'll present it to the whole board, if that's okay. And we're finalizing the agreement with the administrative agency that's gonna help us.
Yeah. Yeah. I think we're there now. Did we put the lump sum already?
Right, we did that.
Uh-huh.
And that's all that we go into the budget, is the lump sum. And then the application process and the award process is separate, and that would, I guess that's what we're gonna forget.
Right. Okay. Good.
Any other questions for Ms. McGlaughlin? Remind me, I'm trying to, you enjoyed the email that Commissioner Jones sent. I know, I hadn't got my tax bill yet, so if it's been in the mail, it hadn't reached me yet, so postal service, Christmas, all that. But he did say that people can go online, am I not right?
Yes, he indicated. He indicated that the amounts would be available online, and that you could go online and pay your taxes, and that he had anticipated tax bills dropping the week of Thanksgiving. I have not circled back around with him yet to verify that. I did see a charge that we paid for some postage, so.
Must be.
That we sent to the company. Now, I don't know, you know, the timing of that, but.
Yeah, I just want to have them inform the public they can go online or come to the office now if they want to.
Yes, that's my understanding.
All right.
I haven't heard of anyone getting their, I haven't received mine.
No, I haven't.
Yeah, we'll check on that piece.
What's the normal turnaround period from the time when we approve the resolution and everything? Normally, what is it, about 15 days or something like that?
In the years that I've been here, typically, yes, I would say one to two weeks, depending on how things are lined up and if there's, how the review of those bills go. This year was a little different, and last year was a little different as well because of the COVID situation, having to send that stuff to Atlanta versus actually going up there yourself and delivering it. But yeah, I would probably say 15 days is about maybe what it was in the past.
So I do know that this would be the earliest we've gotten the bills out that I can recall, if not, close to it.
Well, this was definitely the earliest we set the military.
Right. Yeah.
I'd have to go back and look to see. But I know, I believe, Jones indicated that they were available online.
He did say that. He did say that. All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Yep. Thank you.
Resolution adoption of district maps. McDonald.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, Commission. First, may I apologize by my casual attire. I had a suit, and there was an accident, and had to scramble to find something to wear for. What I had in the office. Also, I'm not at my, I had the booster shot this morning, so kind of not feeling at my best right now, so y'all forgive me if I'm a little low-energy up here with you, more than usual. Yes, first, let me thank y'all. Let me start by just thanking the entire commission. I know this has been an incredibly challenging process for the last couple of months. Y'all brought me in to facilitate, to work with you, to end up with an ending point where there was maps that incorporated as much as we could with respect to what the subjective needs of the members were with the objective legal requirements we had. And I believe at the end, the map we are submitting to you for your consideration is a very, very clean, good map that meets every legal requirement we must meet, and really kind of honestly cleans up some things about our maps that had kind of evolved over 20 years of being redrawn and redrawn. So I'll give you just a clear overview, starting with our deviations. We satisfy our one-man-one-vote requirements. All our deviations are under half a percent, which is incredibly low. I believe the lowest one we have, if I'm not mistaken, Commissioner Walden's district got within one person of the baseline number. Our retrogression number for the purposes of the Voting Rights Act was two. We now have three minority-majority districts in Liberty County, which I think is an accurate reflection of what we are as a community. We're a county that's slightly more than 50% African-American, and now exactly half of the Commissioners that have districts that are districted are now African-American With all that said, again, I think it was a challenging process. I think, I want to thank you all for your participation and patience. I know that there were frustrating moments, and for those, I apologize. I did the best I could to help facilitate everybody's needs and everybody's wants with what we needed to do. And I'm very proud of the work that I've done here at the local level for the first time, and I hope that it's worked out satisfactory to the commission's needs. With that, if there are any questions, general questions about where we are with the maps, I'd love, I'm here to address them. If not, I submit them to you for your consideration, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. McDonald? I think we.
Mr. Chair.
We all know him. Yes, sir.
Jimmy, could you just, let me hand you something.
Yes, sir.
See if you can explain it to me. You can take it back over there. I've got another. If you look at that census block right there, it says 13 up top, correct? On your first sheet, up top, the POP?
Yes, sir.
Okay. But if you go down and add up what it says, three whites, five black Afro-Americans, where's the rest of the people? I know we did not detect that. I did not detect this until last night.
This would be a question for someone from the Census Bureau, sir.
Okay.
I know that we've run into certain blocks like this.
I checked about five of them last night, and out of five, four of them were incorrect. If you turn the next two pages, you'll see the same playing, y'all.
And I've seen some other census, individual census blocks, and as far as, as far as the itemization of them, again, I know that what was brought into MapTune by the Regional Commission was taken directly from the Census Bureau.
Mm-hmm.
So these are numbers the Census Bureau provides. And I know that there are some questions overall about the count, sir, that I think county by county, state by state are addressing. But with respect to what we utilize, we had no discretion with respect to adjusting a number, changing a number. These are just numbers that were part of every itemized block file that was downloaded directly from the Census, directly from the U.S. Census Bureau.
So wouldn't this have thrown the numbers off all across the whole entire county?
No, sir, because the, the baseline number that is being utilized, whether it's adding up or not on the itemization, the 13 number is what's being added up as a block file and added up to a baseline number that the U.S. Census Bureau has given us. Okay? So that's what we use as the baseline number divided by six.
You lost me. Okay? What I'm saying is, you're saying you got 13 in this particular block, but you're only showing.
13 would be the number.
You're only showing eight. So if we wanted to make sure that a district's state minority.
Well, for the purposes, and that might be just because of this block file and the items, the categories that it's utilizing, for the purposes of the Voting Rights Act, minority means African-American. Okay? So it's taking that five number as a percentage of the entire district and how it calculates into the entire district and the entire overall number.
I'm not gonna delay everything, but I'm not agreeing with that.
I understand, sir.
I am not agreeing with, because numbers, numbers do add up for itself, and these numbers are not adding up. Okay? So I'm not, you know, I won't sit here and try to beat that dead horse, because I think a decision has already been made on certain issues. Also, if you look at it, Jimmy, you know, I had expressed concerns, and once upon a time, when I left out from back here, I was told that I was going to have all of while the road on a certain side. That's not the true case now, according to the last map that I saw. Also, I was supposed to be taken back all the way to Jones Creek, if you remember that discussion in the room. If you look at the map, I did not receive all of that back up to Jones Creek. So there's a lot of deceptions that District One, I can't speak for other districts, and I want, dare think about doing it, but for District One, like I've told all the other Commissioners in an email, District One is being set up to fail. And worst of all, which you bringing me all the way up into Harman's Road from the waterfront, and all the way to Baconfield Subdivision, and bringing me through Homestown to, what's the road? Coetlin. In the years come, if someone else decides to run for District One Commissioner out of Coetlin, out of that subdivision, and if they are successful, we won't have really no representative living on that side of Liberty County. Everything will be coming out of Heinzville, Georgia.
I can't speak to the politics of it.
I can speak to it. And this is something that I expressed to you, and it was always, you would always tell me, you can't speak, but you were the one helping us draw the lines, and that's why I'm looking at you.
Well, Mr. Commissioner, I'll say, from that day where you and Mrs. Jones were in that room with us, your district did not change at all. As far as the politics of that district, sir, I can't, I mean, it wasn't my job to think of the politics, or I can't speak to the politics. As far as the size of the district, the one thing I can say is, the challenge for your district was that you had a significant number of people that needed to be added to your district. And for population density, there was not many places we could go to go get those people to meet the, to meet the requirements we had to balance out the districts.
Okay.
There were only so many, so many directions we could go into.
Okay, hold on. When we got started, all of us received a sheet, what we were short of. I think I was short of 581. Commissioner Thrift had to get rid of 3,000 people. I can't recall what the rest. But if I, if I was only short of 581, when we went into Coetlin, and I clicked that block the other night, and I looked at it, there was 500 and I think 50-something people just in Coetlin, out in that subdivision that I picked up. That's not including Homestown. So if I'm looking at the overall amount of people that I picked up, I should be over.
It's not how it works, sir. When you start drawing and messing and drawing every individual district to balance, and one of the things that we needed to do with your district as well, sir, is consider the Voting Rights Act in the sense of, it was a minority-majority district 10 years ago. It was down to 43% African-American when we began this process. If we had to maximize the minority number in your district without, if there was a way of doing it, if there was a way, if there was an objective manner in drawing your district and making sure it was not diluted for the purposes of minority representation, we legally had to draw that. And the only way we could do that, and we did several earlier renditions of this, is in essence, what we did is we looked at all the maps and basically started over again so that we could preserve the minority representation in the districts where the minority representation was the highest and was significant. So when, so when you looked at your original 500 number, based on where your district was at the starting point of this, it doesn't really reconcile with what we did, because what we did is really draw a brand-new map. And we drew a brand-new map in order to make sure that we could draw the first district with as high a minority population as possible to preserve its minority status, and while still preserving the other two minority districts, including the new one that we had. So you're trying to reconcile an endpoint that didn't come from the beginning, which you're starting from. Those are two very different maps.
So.
So the map, the map we ended up with was the district that you and Ms. Jones came and looked at that day, sir.
All right, so let me ask this. So if District One extended way out this far this time to keep it a minority district, am I correct?
It was one of the factors that went into it, to, in order to gain people, as well as try to maximize the minority district.
Okay, let's say in 10 years from now, when Census Count comes again. Okay, let's say in 10 years from now, when census count comes again, District One has to go further or come further into Heinzville to keep it a minority district.
There's so many assumptions that go into that. You're assuming a certain rate of growth, you're assuming a certain kind of growth. There's no way to predict what's going to happen 10 years with what their numbers are. All we could do is draw based on the numbers that we had right now.
Okay, and so that still left District One with the lowest amount of numbers amongst the other five districts in the county.
No, sir.
Yes, it did.
If it did, it was within, it was within a point, a tenth of a deviation.
But it's still the lowest.
Within a tenth of a deviation, sir.
But still the lowest, but now the largest, and I understand the rural area, but also I came into Heinzville, two different sides connecting to Commissioner Thrift and Commissioner Jones and, yeah, Commissioner Jones. I miss Commissioner Gillis. So what I'm saying is, with it still being the largest district, and like I said, it's almost setting up, and I still will say it and I'll stand behind it, it's setting up District One for failure in the future for representation on the eastern side of Liberty County.
What I would say, the one, the closest thing I can make a commentary to that is that the overwhelming majority of the percentage of the population of that district still remains on the eastern side of the county. There's, there's not.
Still, all it takes is one person to qualify on this side.
I understand your frustration.
I don't blame you for staying away from the politics because it gets ugly, especially when you have people directing you on what to do and how to do it. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. McDonald? Seem to be none.
I'll just say, Mr. Chairman, I, I mean, mine changed three times. I had one, we changed it, and we had to change it back. I mean, I understand what Commissioner Stevens is saying. When he ran, Reverend Anderson was down there. But who's to say? If he's five whites or five African Americans and they run, they're going to vote for the best person that's down there. I mean, that's it in a nutshell. And he's been successful. I had an area that was predominantly a white district. I had opposition last time and I happened to win. Now, I guess we could, I mean, politics is to where you wake up in the morning and if they're mad with you, it don't make no difference what you've done ahead of time. John McCuyver is a prime example of that. I mean, what he did, and he went with opposition and he won. Donald Lovett, he won. So, I mean, it's, I understand exactly what Commissioner Stevens is saying, but I also understand that you do a good job, it ain't going to make no difference. It may have in the past, but I don't believe it'll make a difference. And I feel like he'll be successful. But now, he's got an area, just like I do, that's completely wide open, which means there's nothing but growth going to happen. Now, you know, some of these, the numbers that may be in there may be Asian numbers. It may be different, you know, other folks that's in there. I don't have any idea, but I am satisfied that the job that y'all have done, and I looked at it and Ms. Strickland looked at it, and we walked out and then we had to come back because we had to change it. But, I mean, I appreciate you, you doing your job here, and that was to, you know, act as a negotiator or whatever, and the young lady that helped you, but that's, that's it.
What I would, what I would probably say before, if y'all, there are any questions, is I appreciate your frustration, Commissioner. I appreciate all y'all's frustration because y'all's perspective of these districts is different than mine. It's not personal for me. I'm objective and I'm trying to facilitate and make sure we meet certain things and that they end up a certain way, not based on whether that neighborhood or this line or this road means anything to me, not from my perspective. You sit in a seat that provides a very unique perspective, this is personal and it should be. And I know, I can appreciate and respect your frustration. I'll say this, after 10 years ago, having done this at the state level for the state senate seats and the state house seats and the congressional seats, I can unequivocally say it was more challenging doing it at the local level because of how personal it is and how close to home it is. And this was a process that I really don't look forward to doing again. But I wanted to know that, considering that, all of you participated and that's all that could have been asked, and, you know, I want to say I appreciate the frustration. I stayed out of the politics of it because it wasn't my place to be in the politics of it. And we just did our best to facilitate the process, to end up at an endpoint that was something that could bring us here to where we can actually consider it. And it's the will of the commission, the commission. If the commission decides to vote these down and send us back to draw a different map, I'm here to serve. But with that said, thank you for the privilege of working with y'all. Those of y'all who have talked to me or either known me in the past or got to know me during this process, being part of this process is one of the reasons I came home, so that I could be part of working in the community to help the community I very much love move forward and with whatever skill set and whatever I have to offer. So thank you for the opportunity to do this, and if it was a frustrating process for you, I apologize.
Mr. Chairman, I just kind of wanted to add on to that. And I appreciate you, Mr. McDonald, and doing what you did and helping us out, but, and it was very frustrating, but whoever, you know, who would have known in 10 years that Liberty County has grown, to the growth that it has grown and that we are having this problem? I welcome it. We set up here and we keep approving subdivisions and the house tops and house tops. Well, they're here. And now we have to draw the lines, change them. That comes down from the state. But I want to make sure now, if we approve the resolution, then what, it goes back to the state for them to?
Representative Williams, we will, we will run an advertisement of an intention.
You'll look over it again to make sure that.
Yeah. That we'll have a certification from the Legislative Correctional Reapportion Office on it, which at this point is a formality, they're looking at it. And then from that point, Representative Williams will drop a piece of local legislation during the General Assembly in January. It would go through both the House and the Senate, and upon the signature of the governor would come up effective for, honestly, I think then at that point, Mr. McCuyver, Chairman McCuyver would take over and make sure that we're ready to go for whatever elections we have next year.
The election that's coming up in 2022.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I think we've done a good job, and I think all of us have walked out with one map and came back and we've had to redraw and relook, and it was just a work in progress. And I think you've done a really good job.
I think there were moments where everybody had frustrations.
I know District Three grew by house tops. These others may have a large mass of land, but we've got a lot of, I had a lot of people in District Three.
All right. Commissioner.
Yes, sir.
Before we close.
The only thing I'd like to say, Jimmy, I do appreciate you, your time, and we're friends, you know, away from this, and I appreciate you coming back to Liberty County to be a part of what we're trying to build here in Liberty County. With the growth in Heinzville in particular, and, you know, I work for the city, so I see it every day. And I knew that from talking to some of the commissioners, and I think I've mentioned it to some of the commissioners, I knew the lines as we know them today did have to move.
Yeah.
And there was some frustrations about that movement. I would have loved to have kept everything I had and moved to gain the numbers that I needed. But in some cases, you have to give in order to gain, and I did that. Now, the part that I no longer have, I don't have, but I'm a Liberty County Commissioner. And the relationships that I've built, built with people that are no longer in my district, I'll still have those relationships with those people, and I'll still serve them. My phone number hasn't changed, and I'll still do what I can for them, for Liberty County as a whole. I mean, it is frustrating, but I can live with it. I mean, and I'll move forward. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Jones.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. McDonald, from day one, I was aware that my district, the district that I represent, is one of the more unique districts as far as.
That was one way of describing it.
Yeah. As far as demographics go, the numbers go, the ratio of the population. When I ran for this position, my district at that time was still a unique district. It was always 70, 30, 80, 20, 75, 25. I've lived in this district all my life, and from the last four commissioners that served this district, all lived within a mile of each other. They live in the same community, they live right down the street from each other. So during those times when they drew the districts, I'm sure they had in mind drawing the district for their home, where the land mass was. Well, what's so more unique from those four commissioners that I mentioned, I stay about two miles, maybe three miles down the road. Grew up in the same community, we've been neighbors, went to school together, raised up kids and all together. Yeah, it happens to be today a 80% white district, 20% minority. When I was born 60 years ago, that's always been the makeup of this district. Before we changed the boundaries this time, I think I was at 31%. Okay, I won this seat with 31% minority people in the district. I don't have that same number now, but it's nothing that I hang my hat on that I've been disenfranchised because this is where I live, you know? Before, when I had the 30% number, you had to draw the numbers, the lines pretty awkward in order to accommodate the ratio, the demographics. From my understanding, what we did with the present map, we did a lot of cleaning up along with Commissioner Thrift, my district, District Four was the only other district that experienced growth. So I had to give up people in order to accommodate the making of the maps. I feel that the people that elected me for the job that I'm going to do, if they had elected me because I'm black, I would have never won. I live in a 75% white district. That's nothing that bothers me. I've served the people. I don't care if you're black, you're white, you're green or blue. It just happens so my district is more disproportionate than others. And in order, and in other way to make it a perfect world, we would have six districts with a 50-50 cut. You know, we have 50%, this 50%, that, everybody would be happy per se, but then we would have one of the craziest-looking maps that has ever been drawn on earth.
Yes, sir.
Me personally, and I appreciate everybody that's been pointing out a lot of things in my district, it's not that I'm ignorant to the fact, it's not that I'm blind to what is going on. I see it for what it is. But if we're going to concentrate so much on having minority, majority-minority districts, somebody going to come up on the short end of the stick, unless we went to a 50-50 split in all six districts. My district happens to be the one, if we are looking at that, demographics and those numbers, and if that's important, yeah, well, maybe I am being disenfranchised, but I don't see it.
If I may address that for one second, just from an objective legal standpoint, your minority number went from something like 31 to 24, more or less. So it was already overwhelmingly a non-minority district. But one thing that your district now does in contrast before is it's a reflection of your community, sir, much more now than it was before, in the sense of where the voters are. Your district geographically last time, as well as the voter makeup, was, as you put it, interesting. But if, there was not a disenfranchised or even voting rights discussion with your district because it began at a 32% non-minority district. So it wasn't one that met any thresholds for that. So then it was really just drawn to, as you said, clean up some certain things and then honestly create a district that was more representative of that part of the county, which hasn't had its own district in decades, or its own district representation in decades. So we had the freedom to do that for other circumstances to do that. So it was drawn mainly for that point, to create more of a community of interest, clean it up. And the one reason I'll address also in a public forum is one reason your minority number did come down was that it picked up about 5,000 votes on Fort Stewart. And Fort Stewart is overwhelmingly non-minority when it comes to the census. So they're not necessarily, but they're not registered to vote and they're not voting members of your district. So those are things to also consider when looking at the overall analysis of your district. Your district is primarily made up now east of 196.
And along on what you're saying now, where I did have those pockets in Heinzville, and those were a bunch of my minority support, taking me out of Heinzville, now I've captured more of my home, more of my back door, more of the people that I grew up with, more of the people that I know. You know, more of the people that stay right across the street that one district don't divide by the highway, I got one side of the highway and this district got the other. It's more uniformed, it's more of the people that I call my home. And like I said, the numbers say one thing, but as far as being a community servant, I serve everybody and I'm not letting that discourage me from accepting what we have. I appreciate and I understand everyone's frustrations. I'm not 100% happy, no, but.
I don't think anybody here is 100% happy.
Yeah.
And, but that's the nature of this process, you know? When we drew these 10 years ago for 230 members, both senate and house, nobody was 100% happy. The Speaker used to make a joke that he didn't get his mother-in-law. I mean, his mother-in-law was drawn out of his district. I mean, this process by its nature doesn't leave everybody happy.
Commissioner Frazier, you online, sir?
Going to sleep?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, can you hear me?
We can, sir. You want to make a statement? You can at this time before we take this to vote.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, my fellow commissioners, I just want to reiterate what I think I heard from everyone else. This has been a frustrating process. I don't, I don't think anyone walked away from this process 100% happy. But with that being said, that's, that's what, when we bring someone in who's thinking objectively, that's what happened. You know, I can talk about my district, District Two. There were portions of my district that I felt very strongly in person with, you know? But I could say that they have another great representation with Commissioner Gillis. So, and I know that he will represent my constituents that I'm leaving behind in good fortune, just like I think everyone else feels the same way. I know my district, you know, if you look at it, it looks very small, but I have the same amount of people than anyone else has in there. Of course, my district has always been landlocked, you know, with other commissioners because it isn't what needs in the city of Heinzville. But with that being said, I'm saying it's a process for everyone. And I feel like if anyone feels like they got everything that they were looking for, then the process as a whole wasn't the correct process. So with that being said, I am, for the most part, satisfied with the lines being drawn. And first, I want to just say quickly to Commissioner Walden and Commissioner Gillis, you know, thank you for us sitting down, you know, trying to work together with this process, try to make it a lot easier as well. And I think even moving forward, that we all have always worked well together, and I think we could continue to do in that in this process moving forward, even with the lines being drawn as they are. And I think Mr. McDonald, for the most part. And I think, uh, Mr. McDonald, for the most part, you know, he, I know he tried his best to work with everyone. And I, and I, and I understand, and I just want to say thank you to you as well because you're dealing with fourteen different individuals, you know? Not just us, it's the board of education as well. So I, I want to just say thank you to you and everything that you've done to try to make this process as seamless as possible. And I know it had a whole lot of themes with it, so. With that being said, uh, I'm just ready to move forward to, to all the other obstacles that we have to, to look at with Liberty County. And let's just continue to move Liberty County forward.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Commissioner Stevens, I believe I have a theory and I can't objectively a hundred percent say this is right, but it's something I will track down for you.
But it's gonna be after the fact.
Well, but I think I have an answer to your question regarding the census blocks. This is probably taken from some type of map attitude or some type of programming that allows you to itemize certain categories. If you look here, you have white, black, African-American, American Indian, Asian, Hawaiian Islander. That means someone selected these numbers to show, showed, showed these categories as well as other. But an itemized category that is counted pursuant to the census is Hispanic.
Let me say this, sir.
So have the Hispanic number been shown here? My guess is, this is just my guess, but my, my, my guess is that you have five Hispanic people who live in this census block that wasn't itemized here.
Let me say this, Mr. Chairman, to clear up some things. I heard what everyone else say. It doesn't matter to me who you are. I was looking at the numbers, the way how they're projected on this paper that he has. I don't care if you're white, black, blue, green. If I can serve you, I can serve you. But I was looking at the numbers on how it affect the whole entire county in moving the lines. I want everyone to understand that.
And what I'm saying, sir, is that that five Hispanic number is figured into that thirteen. It's just not itemized on this list because they didn't chose, choose that layer.
That's a wild guess.
I, I believe that, I've been working around this stuff for more, better part of a decade, sir. So it might be a guess, but it's not a wild one.
But it's a zero by that particular, what you're saying?
No, because Hispanic is not there.
Okay.
It's not itemized as one of the categories that was looked at.
But you got some others that are the same way.
But...
And I, I mean, I'm not going to go back.
What I'm saying, what I'm saying is if you were to list, when you look at these GIS programs, there might be twenty different categories. Whoever chose this decided to just choose these five and other.
Do you remember the first day when we came in, I asked, where was the Hispanics? And I don't think we had an answer then.
We did, because for the purposes of the voting rights analysis, the Hispanics were applicable to our demographic breakdown, so.
I'm just looking at the total count.
I understand, sir.
Okay. And that may not be irrelevant to everybody else in here, but to me it is.
I just feel, I, I think that's, Mr. Chairman, I think that's a pretty reasonable explanation. I'll track down it for sure. But when you add all the categories there and pull them out on the programs we were using, you can either add or remove categories, including the Hispanic demographic. We do have fifteen percent of the county is Hispanic. My guess is that, that tracks with probably five Hispanic that live in that census block.
All right. Thank you, sir.
I'll take this with me and I'll confirm that.
And this town, Chairman, entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we, um, approve resolution to adoption of the district maps.
Chairman, I'll second that motion if you will agree that when you represent this county, it's red, yellow, black and white, just like the song we all sing, okay? That, that's what it's all about. Now, guess what? I don't know if people understand it, but you got to represent the whole county. So if you accept that, I'll second it.
I do, and we all represent the whole county.
Yes, sir.
The whole county, yeah. All right. All in favor of the motion that's presented, please raise your right hand. Those in opposition? Thank you, Commissioner Frazier. Let me say this, um, being, being chairman, I'm sorry, Jim.
I was gonna say thank you for everything, Mr. Chairman. I'll excuse myself.
Yeah, um, you know, I tried to be, uh, just to facilitate it because I don't have a district. Patrick, I have the whole county to rep, to represent. But I will say, and I've spent a lot of time in, in government and, uh, my mind went back to my schoolboy days and District One was much like your district, Mr. Jones. And I won too. I won too. I didn't run on race. I just ran as a person trying to improve education in Liberty County at that time. But I, sitting here tonight and hearing you all expound, um, on your, um, on the process and how it all came together and, uh, you know, I'm, I'm proud, but I'm certainly Liberty County proud to be a part of this commission tonight. You know, you could not have done a better job, I think, of navigating this process if you had done tonight. I know other communities, Jim would tell you, it doesn't work nearly as smoothly as this. And, and Commissioner Walden, right, it's not that we're contesting each other, but we have our opinions. We do.
Well, that's, that's a given. I mean, that's why we up here for.
Yeah. But, uh, Commissioner Jones, if your dad was here tonight, he'd be proud of you. I gotta say to you publicly, he will be proud of you, sir. He'll be proud of you, sir. Thank you all.
Thank you. Did, did we get Commissioner Frazier?
We did.
He did. He voted.
We did. Bid for Miller Park improvements. Changed the tone a little bit. Good job, man.
Well, Trent's lost some weight, ain't he?
Yeah, he did. He got a little bit shorter.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Uh, my name's Brandon Purcell. I'm with T.R. Long Engineering. Trent actually has to be out of town tonight, uh, for a funeral, so, uh, I'm gonna represent the project. This is Miller Park. This is a rebid of Miller Park improvements. Basically, this one took out the pavilion and the septic system went along with the pavilion from the original bid. This was bid on November twenty-third and there were two bidders. Low bidder is Taylor's Creek with a bid price of nine hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty-five cent. T.R. Long is, uh, recommending we get, move forward with that. Now, one thing to remember on this project is, uh, the funds have not been identified yet and they will be decided between the commissioners on how to divide that up.
He told you to say that?
Yes, sir.
Wait a minute now. I said, I said, Commissioner Stevens, District, we may not want to contribute now.
Well, it's still in District One.
So are we going to accept a bid that we don't know where the funds are coming from?
Well, I, Trent and I spoke briefly about it and, and I talked to Kim a little bit before the meeting. I think what, what we, you know, you've got several projects that are kind of staring you in the eyes. One is Miller Park, uh, one is the South Side Park, one is the gem renovation project that's out there. If you'd let Kim and I, please get together before your bid month meeting, do a projection on your splash funds that are remaining to come in for the rest of the program and then bring you a sheet, then I think that'll give you a, if you'll let us do an estimate of how much money, because I know, I know you want to see, well, how much might I get, so.
Couldn't we do this in phases like we did the others? Or we had to do it all at once?
Yes. Um, I believe if I'm understanding the question correct, we can break down what is put in in phases. Is that what's being asked?
Right.
We bid it out that way in case we needed to.
Give us a little breathing room.
How we do it. Yes, sir.
That'd be good to know.
That sounds...
Yeah.
That'd be good to know.
That's what we did with Gil. Gil Park.
Yeah, right, right.
We can do this the same way.
So this is if you did everything at...
Everything at once.
This was bid up.
Everything aside from the pavilion and the septic system.
Right, okay, okay, all right.
This is all the, this is all the, uh, earthwork.
Yeah, this include the...
Basically drainage, uh, everything that goes along with that, but it doesn't include any vertical improvements. So that's what we took out from the, from the original bid, was those vertical improvements. So I think the other thing we'll do then is to sit back down so that we can take a look at what these improvements have to be tied together. A lot of it's drainage, some of it's paving, and bring that back to you too.
The, the one thing that, when me and you were talking about that part, we didn't let Marion know we was going down there, but...
Well, y'all, y'all don't have any rights because you took your money back.
Well, and that, that's, uh, there's a reason behind that. And I was gonna see just how much you would listen to it, but we were unsure, I was unsure, in the bid, were we gonna buy new recreation playground equipment for the park?
Which, and we did.
I don't know that we did.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we did.
It was already bid out. Y'all, y'all...
That's already there.
Y'all approved that to go ahead with that phase earlier.
Right.
Yes, sir.
And that was how much?
Eighty...
Eighty-six hundred? Close to nine.
No, it had to be more than that because we were talking about the basketball courts. We was talking about the...
No, we, we're talking about like the swing, like the swing set, the place, the playset for the...
Playground equipment was...
Playground equipment.
Just under fifty thousand dollars.
Under fifty. You got fifty?
No, it's already done and paid for.
You done paid for? Okay, man.
Yeah, it's already...
All right, we'll, we'll, we'll talk about it.
I'll have to call, charge y'all some toll fee.
Just hang on there. We'll be, we'll be bumping Bill Carter Road next, so just, but hang on.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, that, that was my, uh, you know, looking at this and, um, now, Joey, you said that the, this cost does not include the pavilion or the septic tank, nothing like that?
It does not. I don't believe it includes new fencing or any of that. This is basically just, just the...
Just the groundwork?
And the drainage, um, and some water lines and things that need to go in and, uh, and some, I believe it does include road.
D cell lane, uh, parking lot by the ball field, parking lot going to the basketball court area and the actual drive that leads past the, uh, um, don't, the, the landfill, that's hard, yeah.
Okay, well, and I guess my, my question is... Yeah, my question is, so, I mean, we're doing the prep work, all the groundwork. And, um, let's say, you know, when we come back at mid-month after you and Kim look at everything and, and we agree to go with, with one of these bids, what does that do with the park? If we going in and doing all that groundwork, then we just got the pretty graded ground. Is there any vertical, yeah, I mean, anything, is it gonna still be a basketball court? There's still gonna be, uh, a playground, I mean, a, a baseball field. Can they still play baseball if we...
If you tear it up?
Are we going in there and just, you know, do all this?
We won't be tearing up the ball field.
You won't be tearing up the ball fields?
We're gonna fix a lot of the sidewalks going around the side, including around the dugout area. But it won't be disturbing anything inside the ball field or inside the basketball court area.
So, and while all this groundwork is going on, can people still utilize it?
There'll be times where you can't get in there.
Yeah, because I mean, that, there are people, um, at that park all the time on weekends. So, I mean, are we gonna shut it down while we do all this prep work?
I mean, there'd be times when it would be non-accessible.
Yeah.
I think you could phase in, right. I mean, I think you could phase in and we, we'll look at the plan at the next meeting when we talk about the phased. But just thinking about, I think you could probably leave that road open while you did some work away from the road. But there'd be some, there would be some, definitely anytime, even if you went off.
Please pardon our progress line or whatever.
That's true, Mr. Chairman, and, and, of course, you know, I understand with Mr. Stevens, because I didn't tell him what my thinking was. My thinking was, we, we had all talked about in this meeting about that part being on the highway, which is, you know, besides Gil Park is the only one we drive beside. But you start doing it in phases. I mean, I, I know how to build a house. You start from the ground up. But you might have to have somebody that says, wait a minute, let's put the septic tank system in, the drain field in, and while we're doing that, let's do this. So right now, we don't know how much money that it's gonna take. Well, I didn't want to be giving three hundred thousand dollars. And really and truly, unless I'm badly mistaken, it's been eight months or nine months. So we need to cut bait or fish, whatever we want to do. I mean, if we need to do it, Mr. Chairman, let's award the contract to them and say, march forward. And like you said, we may have to put the sign up there that says, you know, please excuse our progress. But, um, I mean, that's just me talking. I was wanting to contribute that. My dad used to run the store in McIntosh and I remember when Bill Carter was over there and I remember Joseph Miller and all of them. But I mean, it's up to you, Commissioner Stevens, if you want to do it.
I'm ready because it's past due.
I see you got enough money in there.
Yeah, because I can go back to Mr. Brown and the chairman and get some money.
Well, now, you've got a pretty good chunk in there for the park, don't you? I mean, all that's left right now is to finish up Yeoman's Road.
No, Yeoman's Road is, should be finished.
Maybe some grassing left.
Grass growing, yeah.
So then it's Bill Carter Road and Lewis Frazier after that?
No, just, uh, Bill Carter.
Does this include what we talked about, the D cell lane, Joey?
No.
It does not, it doesn't, not, it includes the D cell lane for the ball park, but it doesn't include all the way out front with the fire station.
So the turning lane that we talked about to go all the way?
Right, mhm.
That's not in there?
Oh, not the turning lane all the way. No, the D cell lane is.
I know. We talked about the turning lane being all the way to Bill Carter Road.
Yes, it does not include that.
Yeah, we pulled some money out of solid waste to help with that turning lane.
Not with a turning lane.
What, what about the road going on in? After we turn off the road, can't we? Because you, because the convenience center is gonna be upgraded also. Oh, we are talking about that?
Yes, we're not at the same time, but there's, there's no funds identified in solid waste for that. Solid waste on its own, we, you know, we need to go look at the capital improvement program for solid waste and see what we want to shift around. Right now, the fund is running low because of the time of the year.
All right, quit, last question is, can we go back to the A R P money?
To the what money? I'm sorry.
A R P money, author money.
For the park, uh, you could. It's not in that budget right now, but you could...
Because you remember we had...
You could relook at that budget.
Because I think if you, Mr. Chairman, remember correctly, then we put a set aside four hundred thousand for the completion of Gil Park. I thought that's what we did.
I've forgotten the numbers, but we did.
I, we did. If we can set aside money for Gil Park, we can go back since Gil Park is up and moving, shift that money over to Miller Park.
Well, I think they need to, they, you should have had the, the financing part and the, the money part before it came before us for approval.
I agree.
But you got to be...
But we didn't know.
It didn't come before you for approval tonight. That's, there's no intent for you to take action tonight.
Okay.
Intent, and, and what Trent recommended and what I agree is that since the financing is not determined, is we sit down, number one, to let you know about those other projects.
That's right.
There are already on your books to do.
Right.
Obligated under Splash Six.
Right.
Before you do whatever you're gonna do with your money that may come in,
Right.
that you know that those projects may run over and you may not be able to fully complete them in the tax. One, one is the gem, one is the road shop, one is some of that, so.
One is the EMS station?
No, sir, it's not.
EMS station is sitting separately?
Yes, sir, it's not. You couldn't use money for the EMS station.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I was, on this, though, this zoning, I, I'm a little confused. Are you just going in there and just doing land work, earth work? But then are we gonna redo the, uh, the bid, there's a building there?
So the last time it came before you, it had, it was an all-inclusive? You rejected that bid?
Right.
And you said, we'll do it in phases? Let's just, let's just get a bid on the earth work first. And that's what we're bringing back to you tonight.
I think the last bid was about, what was it, about thirteen?
It was, uh, without contingency.
Thirteen or twelve, the last bid.
Thirteen or twelve, what, million?
Million?
One point four, for, you're talking about just for Miller Park, including pavilions, one point four?
One point for every, for everything, including the earth work?
Including the earth work? Okay.
Yes, sir, that was.
I was thinking about another project.
Pavilion and everything, Joey?
That was, the pavilion and everything.
We may, we still may be able to do that once we get numbers back for you and Kim. I, I agree with you, Commissioner Walden, but I don't want to...
The, the pavilion was way overpriced. It was at three hundred dollars a square foot or something.
Commissioner Walden, I prefer if we're going in, let's go in and do it. You know, I don't want to say the word wait any longer, but I don't want to go in and the project, and the Miller Park sits there where it can't be used for a year, uh, two years.
Yeah, I, I think, I think, and again, if you let us get the numbers together, I think, I think the best thing to do is, in my opinion of construction, is to go ahead and do all the earth work you're gonna get done. All you got left in is whatever you do on the fencing and the dugouts and the pavilion. And that's what you, that's what you decided to do, sir.
What are we gonna do with a letter that's stating right here the bids were open above reference project and it's his recommendation that we award it to Taylor's Creek? I mean, it's...
There's nothing that...
Huh?
I mean, that, this doesn't bind you to anything. I'm not sure I'm following, but...
Well, that's what I'm saying. Why, why, why put it in there if it's not? I mean, basically, it was for information or...
It is for tonight because you don't have any funding identified.
But nobody else is gonna be able to bid on it.
No, sir. No, sir. All I'm asking you to do is wait till you can make a decision on your money that you're gonna have left for the rest of your whole program.
We've got money. We've talked about having money. He may not have money.
So here's some estimates, if you're ready. Here's some pencil estimates. At the end of the program, Commissioner Stevens, if he doesn't, I'm just starting with you. If he doesn't, for District One, if he doesn't spend any more money for the rest of the program, which is through next April, right, no, I'm sorry, is through April of twenty-three. So you're... So you're talking a year and a half, no other road projects, no improvements, you, you would be able to contribute three hundred eighty-one thousand, six eighty-nine to this project.
Three hundred eighty-one thousand?
Three hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars. Three hundred eighty-one thousand dollars.
Awarded nine hundred thousand?
That's not enough to.
That's not enough to do.
We got to look at something else.
That's what I'm saying. That's the reason I say it. Please let us get together.
Right.
And look at ARPA budget.
Okay.
Uh, see what we can pull together for you. I mean, that's the prudent thing to do.
Okay, one, one last question, Mr. Brown. Bids sometime are only good for what, ninety days?
These are, these are good.
These are good for?
These are good. It'll be fine. Mr. Long, I've talked about it.
All right, cause I don't wanna see where you come back and this bid goes back out. Then it goes up.
No, it's not going back out.
Okay.
It's not going back out.
Well, I, I'm just, was thinking that there's gonna be an opportunity for, if this, if this feller did bid on it and he wants the job, he's probably got a timeframe that he can go in there and do some of the work, whether it's, I mean, it's probably easier for, within a septic system and a drain field.
Well, you'd have to do, at this point, you'd have to do a change order to whoever you award the contract to to get any work, you know, you know that, to, to get it added, cause it wasn't part of the original bid.
Let's wait till the next, till the mid-month meeting and two of y'all, and please, I want to be informed upfront, if you have to call me in for a meeting when you have it, so I can be well in, well informed on what's going on.
Yes, sir, we're just, we're just gonna go through the project, basically, and leave it, leave it vertical, look, see what money's available in the revenue for everybody to contribute. We'll bring that number to you. Also, bring your revenue estimates on your other, on your other projects that you've obligated to.
Yes.
Just so you're fully aware.
Keep it straight, sir.
Yes, sir, just so you're fully aware.
Can we negotiate then? Can you get them in, in a room where we can sit down and talk with them?
No, sir.
Okay.
Not until you, not to, not in a bid situation. You're bound to award it to the low bidder or reject it.
So right now, we need to accept this bid?
No, sir, not tonight.
We'll wait till the mid-month, right?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, which is only about fifteen days away. Not fifteen.
Okay.
Is it next week?
Yes, sir, we, we'll sort it out.
Come right back next week.
We'll sort it out. It's okay.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ed.
Oh, I know you're not Trent, but you have, I think I asked Adam last night, but I don't know if I got a good answer from him, on the Trade Hill project, where are we at with the, uh?
Easement.
The easement. Are, are you familiar with that?
With that one, and I haven't been part of it, but, uh, I can get with, uh, Adam, see if he's made any headway and try to get that.
Okay, cause I know that's, uh, that, that's another project coming, coming out of drainage. We need to, that project has been sitting there now, I know, for about, what, four months now, and if we have another big rain that, those two or three families right there on Trade Hill Road is gonna be in trouble again.
I know Trent has been working towards that, but I don't know what the resolution was, uh.
He's working an easement with a landowner.
Yeah, and I don't know what the status is, but, uh, Trent should be back, I think he drove back tonight.
Okay, yeah.
I'll, uh, when I get out of here, I'll call him.
Yeah.
If he can't reach out to you and let you know, uh, update on where that's at.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Minister, your report?
Oh, yes, sir, I'll make it real quick. Um, we talked about the ARP a little bit. Uh, we are trying to finalize some things for you on the nonprofit, uh, qualifications for you to consider, just, just only a draft. Uh, we are finalizing that budget. I'll bring it back to you in mid-month. If you could at least go ahead and adopt the ARPA budget, contingent on what's in there, contingent for it being able to move, like bringing some other stuff in on the Schwartz complexes. Uh, we are looking at a contract to bring back to you with United Way to Castle Empire, who we talked about administering the online portal, uh, for those businesses to apply, uh, so, uh, we'll bring that back to you also in your mid-month. Other thing I'll bring back in mid-month to you is an estimate that we had to do on the art center roof on our building over here, uh, that's in pretty bad shape. Uh, we've got a, a bid that's been submitted from SRS Roofing. It's around fifty thousand dollars, and I'll put that in your packet for next time, too. That's something that the bid is going to expire on. We need to really go ahead and try to grab a roof for while we can of that caliber. Um, also, didn't know whether you wanted to talk about, in the next meeting, certainly in January, we need to, is talk about the increase to the hotel motel tax. If the board wants to go ahead and do that.
Yes, sir.
Chairman, you asked us to try to bring that forward to increase that to eight percent.
Yes, sir.
That would need legislative action and some advertisement to do it. Flemington's already done it, and my understanding is City of Heinzville's considering doing that.
So is the City of Savannah, looking at.
Yes, sir.
Doing theirs, too.
Yes, sir.
Or Chatham County.
So we can, I'll have Mr. Davis kind of research that, maybe come either in the mid-month or first meeting in January, really, come in mid-month to talk about that, so we can give it to Representative Williams. And then the final thing, you were given a food truck ordinance a couple of weeks ago. Not trying to push that, not saying it's necessarily not, just saying, didn't know what the pleasure of the board was. We'll have that back again for you. So you can look at it.
Okay.
We can answer your questions. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry.
Uh, Mr. Brown, I noticed last night when we was down at the complex, uh, we need to consider some kind of security cameras down there, because last night, uh, when everyone left, and I know sometime it may be a male down there, or it may be, last night it was a female. She was left alone last night to put up everything, so we stayed around with her, but there's no kind of security camera. He was down there for, to help look after the money coming in in the daytime, just in case if something happens. There's no security cameras down there at all. So that's something that I would like to see accomplished down at the East End Complex.
We'll do that as soon as we can, Mr. Stevens, cause I, I know Ms. Stanley and I have already talked about that. We have the same concerns. Y'all have had concerns about the money and about the outside and the inside of that room.
Right.
Uh, in fact, we're, we're gonna be trying to do some things in association with voting. You're not allowed to have a camera in the voting room, but you do need to make sure the machines are secure, and so Mr. McIvers talked to us about that, so yes, sir, I'll follow up on that for you.
Okay.
You had to have, uh, uh, security when you had an event there?
No, you don't.
Which he's talking about security cameras.
Cameras.
I know, but I thought we had to have, like, if you have an event, you had to have.
No.
Yeah, oh, you're talking about like sec, uh, security officers.
No, sir, this is not, that is not currently in there.
Only, only at voting?
Only, well, voting by state law, you have an deputy there.
Commissioner Gill.
Would that have been the City of Midway?
You're talking about like for the party they had down there?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I, I was told by a young lady that wanted to have a sweet sixteen birthday party down there, that they had to have, um, security, like.
Security officer.
A deputy or something like that.
I'll have to check into that.
I think, uh, I think it.
Maybe the size.
Or into the, or to the type of event, cause I know for a family reunion, we don't have to have one, but I think if you're having a party, I think that may be the difference.
I think that's something that we need to look into.
Yeah, that was something.
Make sure it's done fairly across the board and doesn't cost them more additional expense.
You, you, I don't, you can't serve alcohol, uh, but, I mean, you could have a party, um, but, but you can't serve alcohol, whether it's, um, drinking age or, or below.
They need to waive that.
But I, I, uh, this was a sweet sixteen party, and they were told that they needed to have a, a security.
I'll follow up.
Yeah, that could have been waived.
I can't remember off the top of my head, the recreation policy.
The recreation.
See what the contract says?
I will.
Yeah.
Does the City of Midway, um, kind of patrol through there every now and then?
Every now and then, yeah. Uh, one other thing, Mr. Brown, and to this board, is we've got some issues within the whole Liberty County. We've talked about it for years, dilapidated houses. We need to really consider something that we can do about it. Um, I know if you come from ninety-five, Mr. Chairman, to the Flemington curve, you're probably gonna see about at least ten to fifteen dilapidated houses that's already fall down. No one's living in it, you know, so we, I'd like to see this board take a real hard push somehow or another to see what we can do to get those cleaned up. Cause if we're talking about, we're Liberty County proud, we need to show it.
Yeah, would be up to the board to, you know, a few years back, several years now, uh, the board instituted a gateway cleanup policy.
We did.
And when Ms. Florin always here, as a matter of fact, and so we surveyed those coming in on all avenues.
Yeah.
And the board authorized the cleanup of those. I say through enforcement, it was really, it really turned out well. There was some money appropriated to help out, uh, but most people wanna clean them up, they just didn't have any funds, and so it worked out really well.
Appropriation came from a general fund?
It did.
It did? We set aside X amount?
You know, Mr. Chairman, I think you and I should have had to schedule a meeting with this holiday, but we had not did it yet, so we need to go ahead and do that, schedule that meeting with her, see what we can get out of the, uh, Git program. On cleaning up dilapidated houses.
She thought that might be a resource, too.
Joey, we, we, we did talk one time about maybe getting someone like the, uh, the right grants that could help people, um, refurbish homes, you, you know, the, the ones that, that need help doing that. We had talked about it, and you said that you knew someone that, um, that we can maybe talk to and maybe have them to, uh, work with us so that we could try to help some people. I, I get calls, you know, from people that's, that's looking for help, but we, we don't really have a program such as that, but if we can look at, you know, maybe getting some help in that area, I think that'd be good.
Well, we can, and, and if you remember, uh, the, one of the holdups was not being able to apply for another grant through DCA.
Right.
Until we got the head start far enough along, so, uh, I'll double-check with DCA to make sure we're eligible to apply, and then that application period, uh, actually has an open jet, but it will close in either April, March or April of twenty-two. And yes, sir, we can find somebody to try to put that into a survey. Uh, one last thing, too, is that, um, I know Commissioner Giger had some request in his district. Under road contracts, um, you know, we're paving more and more roads, uh, the cities are paving more and more roads, and the contracts with the cities call for road grading for the Mount Lepez. Uh, I know there's been some requests from the mayors also to be able to have some limited street sweeping done of some of those roads, and, and I know that Commissioner Giger and I talked about that, so we wanted to see what the board's wishes were on that.
It was just a transition from grading to street sweeping?
Pretty much. I mean, you, you know, you, there, there are obviously some paved roads that have not just been paved, but, yes, sir, I mean, and, and I don't, I don't think, and I, I would not get into the direct conversation that he's had with, with the mayors, but, um, I, I, I don't think we'd be talking about every month or anything like that.
No.
You know, so.
Well, I, I, I could just expound on that a little bit, uh, Joey. Um, Mayor Baker, um, right now, the county, we provide, um, road grading as part of our maintenance agreement with these smaller cities. And if, uh, for example, if you pave a road, it no longer needs grading, but if you got a maintenance agreement, what kind of maintenance do you do to a paved road? You patch potholes, and if it's got curb and gutter, it need to be swept. So it's still maintenance, it's just a different kind. And, um, the city of Walthileville, um, has a, a pretty good inventory of curb and gutter roads that's, that's never been swept. Now, that, that would include, um, to, um, some point, Highway eighty-four, which is a state highway, but the, the state is not gonna do that. It'll include part of one nineteen from eighty-four to the city of Heinzville. And then you got some, some neighborhood, neighborhood curb and gutter streets, like, um, Carter Road, um, over there where Reverend Fraser lived, and, um, and, and a few others, uh, that's been paved recently. Um, I don't know, um, if speaking of Walthileville, of Commissioners Steve Ensign, Commissioners Thrift, we share that city, and I don't know, um, in the part that Marion has, do they have curb and gutter streets in there? And I don't know the part that Connie currently has, if they have curb and gutter streets in there, but if they do, I think it'd be something that we could look at doing, providing that service. We did, uh, a new street sweeper recently for the county, and it'd just be there, you know, um, once a month, once a quarter. Anything would be more than what they're getting right now.
Don't we have a maintenance agreement with all of this, not a ma, do we have a maintenance agreement with all of the municipalities?
Yeah.
Chairman?
Except Heinzville.
Except Heinzville. Really, why I'm saying that, because Midway and Riceboro, and like you say, Walthileville, US eighty-four, uh, Riceboro and Midway has to put guys out there with shovels and brooms.
Right.
To, to clean it up.
Right.
And it probably takes them about two, two days, three days, and if they get a day and a half in and it rains, and they got this dirt and grass pile up, it gets washed away again, so maybe we need to take a look at all of the municipal assets that, that we have, and look at the contract that we have, the intergovernmental agreement that we have with all of them.
Yeah, I, I, I think if we get with the mayors and, um, let's see, you know, how, how many curb and gutter streets.
Right.
How many curb and gutter streets that they have, and then, uh, I mean, how many curb and gutter streets that's in each city? And then we could come up with, um, one thing about that, and, and I talked with Larry, uh, Mayor Baker about this, you know, the, the debris that you pick up, you, you have to do something with that. In Heinzville, we take it out to JV Road and, and we process it. Now, um, the city of Walthileville, they're not set to do that in neither, in the other smaller cities, so we have to look at a way of disposing to that, the stuff that you collect out of the gutters, once you, um, start a street sweeping schedule. But I, I'm just thinking just off the top of my head, there's some, um, some curb and gutter streets, including on eighty-four, in the unincorporated area of the county. Or right there at the, going into Bill Carter Road in front of that store, right across by the baseball field, right? It's a little bit of curb and gutter right there at St. Peter's. And, yeah, I mean, you know, so it's all over, it's all over the, in the, unincorporated and the smaller cities. Now, I think, um, I think Allenhurst, they got Highway eighty-four, which is a state highway, but the DOT is not gonna do it.
DOT is not gonna do it.
They're not gonna do it, and it may be, um, one or two curb and gutter streets in Allenhurst, but Walthileville has probably more than all the other cities, but, um, I, I think there's something that we can, that we can do.
Let's take a look at it.
How, how would you, how would you frame that?
Tell me, we gotta have more money? That's what it boils down to.
Everything comes at a price.
Well, I mean, what we'll do is, and I think it was a good example, we'll, I think it's, if, if, um, if we wanna be sure, and I don't disagree, I don't disagree that it needs to be like this on a regular schedule, and we're gonna do it countywide, uh, we gotta, I'll get with Clinton, let's look at the number. Paved road miles incorporated in and incorporated need doing, uh, how many times a week they would need to be done full schedule for a year, basically run through it, and look at his manning to make sure he's got enough manpower to do that, fulfill the obligation before we get in it, and then, and that'll, we'll assign the cost to it. We'll, we'll have a cost per mile.
Right, right now, um, with the little bit that I just named on eighty-four in the unincorporated area, and, um, just the three roads that, that I've paved since I've been Commissioner, um, Spencer Garland is curb and gutter, Turning Point and Melvin Lane.
That's the road you paved for me?
Uh, uh, every, and I'm getting ready to pave another one for you as soon as I can. See, that, that's because you my man, see, that, that's why, that's why I look out for you. But it, but it's in, um, is, um, Walthile Road curb and gutter, Marion?
No.
I think it is.
I even cross, when you, when you cross the railroad tracks coming up to eighty-four, I don't think so.
I think, well, I used to drop my grandson off the glorious house. It's curb and gutter. Now, how about Robinson, Robinson Circle?
You're right.
And Robinson Circle.
And Robinson Circle.
Yeah, so, so, and see, and this is our road. This is, um, unincorporated Liberty County.
You're right.
And, and we're not doing anything for them, you know, so, um.
Okay.
You know, it's, it's something, you know, when, when you lay it all out, all the smaller cities and unincorporated, it's, it's a pretty big.
There's enough to keep a.
It's a pretty big undertaking.
There's enough to keep an operator busy.
If nothing else, like, just the distance. The distance from Bakentown Road to, to the jail. I mean, uh, just to go down there to sweep that part of eighty-four from Heinzville to eighty-four.
And transit, transit time alone.
Yeah.
Is gonna.
Mm-hmm.
You know.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I'll be glad, we'll be glad to do that exercise.
Yeah.
All right, sir.
Okay. Bring that back to you.
And, and along with that, unless somebody's doing it, I don't know that they're doing it inside of, uh, the Midway complex area there. We don't do them inside the Recreation Department parking lots.
Right.
And we're fixing to add eight more roads into the Fleming area, and I don't know who's gonna do those to Flemington. I guess it'll wind up being me, possibly.
Either you or Commissioner Jones, what, what it lines?
Me and him, I can operate the shovel if he can run the broom.
I guess the saving grace is that, that hasn't approached us to do theirs, yeah, but Walthileville has, so it opens up the door now for us to have a, a plan.
Sure, be glad to.
One, one that we all can live with. Yeah, I agree with you. There's nothing you would do every week, every, whatever.
No, no, well, I mean, if, if we did it, um, once a quarter, that's four times more than they're getting right now. No, no, well, I mean, if we did it once a quarter, that's four times more than they're getting right now.
That's the baseline, Mr. Brown, once a quarter.
I'm making a note of that.
Commissioner Stevens was talking about, was talking about Riceburg. The state did go down there doing Rice Fest once a year. They'll clean up, they'll clean up 17 once a year for Rice Fest, but that was it.
All right, thank you, good input.
All right.
Very good input.
Heinzville official association?
Yes, sir, this is a renewal of the, for basketball. This has been reviewed, was before, it's been reviewed by the rec board, recommended approval. It's actually, they didn't do it last year, if you remember, because of COVID, it's filled out in here. So the increase is actually only $2,900 a year from 2020 to 2022, which isn't bad. Their recommendation is it is a budget item that we go ahead and approve the contract renewal for basketball.
Is this a contract, does it, just said, the fee went up, Joey?
Yes, sir, overall, based on the number of games that they're projecting, Mr. Barton projects will cost $2,900 more dollars. Over 2020.
Some of that's probably for wear and tear.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Fan-based.
Does, yeah, that's what I, well, and some of that fan-based wear and tear is rightfully deserved. Is there a clause in here?
Chris read that.
Is there, yeah, there's a clause in here for cheating?
You know, if you look at the per game cost, it's not past here, it's $45 a game. I want to think the old price, it may have gone up $10 a game, but it didn't go up.
Yeah.
And they've already approved it, they just need our approval also?
The rec board is.
For their budget, I would make a motion that we approve.
Second.
So they've already vetted it, right?
Yes, ma'am, or yes, sir.
All right, and make sure, because that's what, as a taxpayer, that's what I want to know. All in favor of approving the contract with the Heinzville official association that's presented for the, what, 2924? All right, Mr. Brown. Please let me know my rating right here.
Aye.
And say aye.
Thought you went to sleep.
Joey, now.
Hey, what you gonna do with your cake up here, when you gonna get it next year?
I'm sorry?
He doesn't know it's up there. Someone left a gift up there, a cake at your desk.
Oh. Oh, yeah, I'll be there to get it.
That's all for the good of the order for public session?
It is, we have an executive session consultation with attorney.
Okay, Chair, ten motion to go out of?
Go move, Mr. Chairman.
Into executive session. All in favor? All right, we're going to executive session now.
All right, Chair entertain a motion to come out of the exact session back in the regular sessions?
No move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
With nothing to report that chair entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
No move.
Second?
Second.
Yeah, we're all in favor.
All right.
Have a good night.